To be held in council chambers at four twenty-three Davies Avenue in San Muy C on Tuesday, October twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four, seven oh three. We acknowledge and respect the indigenous peoples within whose traditional lands for meeting today. Now that the meeting's been called to order, the adoption of the agenda, the agenda of the regular meeting, sixteen twenty-four of Tuesday, October twenty-fourth, be adopted as amended from council procedure by law six six three, two thousand fourteen schedule being include a new business section and public question period. One second. Any additions?
We have that slightly changed camera. I don't know if that needs to be addressed.
They don't have.
But they don't have that.
New agenda?
Yeah, I can grab it. I thought it was. Just a second.
The great copsucker.
They don't really like my funny name.
Oh, do they?
Yeah, well, more media, I'm just like, missing.
Just so the public knows, we're just pausing for a second just to get a new set of papers.
Well, there is yours all printed out from here. I didn't get this one.
So what is yours? You got updated one on yours?
Uh.
Okay, then you don't have such an updated one.
Um.
So it's the same as. The agenda that would be normally, that would have been in front of you is under public question period number fifteen is an incumbent resolution. Uh, resolution that the meeting be closed to the public under community charter section ninety-one M, a matter that under another is such that the public may be excluded from the meeting. And that's the only thing that's on it.
Okay.
Okay. We apologize. You guys are good with that on the agenda. All in favor? What's happening? Um, no delegations, near distance now, adoption of the minutes, but the meeting of the regular council meeting fifteen twenty-four of Tuesday, October eighth, two thousand twenty-four, be adopted as presented. Um, the only thing that I saw in here is that Council Cox was not reported as opposed on the second, on page four, and on the back.
Okay.
Right here.
Yes.
That was the only thing I saw in the minutes when I looked them over. The move, um, has amended. Um, this is amended or is it just now it is amended because we've added, we've corrected just spelling, we've added words as amended. You guys good with that?
Okay.
All in favor?
Okay.
Okay, referrals from delegation, no referrals from prior meetings, no operational reports. Any questions on the dot to start with? Yes. I do have a question. Um, two point one D continuing to complete the M I A B C safety concern suggestions. Um, nothing's ever been brought to council of what the suggestions were. Um, and council should have the, we should be directing what we're willing to take risk on and what we're not. Um, so then my phone will stop ringing. Is that, I have no idea, so I don't think council would have. So if we could just find out what that is.
Yeah, I'm saying that I would bring that report to them, excuse me, conform review or adoption, I guess.
That council received our information, the written reports for that, if I'm going to say public works, press that form and frame patent dated October seventeen, two thousand twenty-five.
Okay.
Any questions? All in favor?
Okay.
Um, the fire chief's report that council received for information, a written report dated October first, two thousand twenty-four, provided by fire chief due to turn for the period of September twenty thousand twenty-four.
Hmm, okay.
Any questions? No. All in favor? Okay. Hey, the bylaw. That council received our information or informed by bylaw enforcement for the period of two thousand twenty-four.
Second.
Uh, any questions on that?
Yes.
All in favor? Okay. Do you want to forward your report or does, first of all, does anybody have any question? Yes.
More details on number eight. Yeah.
Do you have any, any?
No.
Okay. Um, let's, let's start with number eight. I, um, I'm going to give a little bit before I hand it over to you because this is something that is the artist's fate, that we said that we would partner with them. Um, and it's just come up at the last R E C K meeting. And I, I have a lot of questions because my, my questions are, is, is the consultant going to have their relationship with the indigenous people or should the village of San will have that relationship? We've, we're saying we're handing over all that money for the consultant to do the work and not, and because it's forty thousand dollars and not, um, not having anything for our staff to do the work because they're going to be, you know, staff and council will be part of that, that consultation. Um, so we do, um, Dan Segal hasn't gotten back to me and, and he's, uh, um, supposed to, I think he's off for a couple of days. Um, once we get more information because I'm like, okay, we can give you thirty thousand, but we need to keep ten thousand so we're, we're not taxing more on our people. Um, because it's downloading from the provincial government that wants it done, right?
And so what is the indigenous engagement project?
This is for emergency. So if there was a flood or if there was a fire or anything like that.
Okay.
That we have to engage with them because of indigenous lands.
Okay. And then my next question is, um, it says each participant of the village participating specific engaging training.
Yeah, so this, this training is specific for this emergency management. It's not just generalized training that we can, you know, say take on our own time. It's something very specific for this focus. So it's, uh, as I was asking about getting some training.
Yeah.
Background, um, as far as like even just, uh, some paperwork or anything, just, uh, for some study material. And it's like, we're, we're not at that stage yet. Um, and so then it's a very specific, um, tailor to this, um, emergency.
As it relates to indigenous lands.
Absolutely, yeah.
And, and just even that, who pays for that? Does it come out of this consulting or does it come out of, because that's all supposed to be covered under forty thousand. But if we've given it all over and, and we reach out to have training, well, then it comes out of our own inner market, right? So, so there needs to be some clarification before we totally, sorry for the jargon. Um, uh, I have a question on number five. What is loss control survey?
Okay, so basically what that is, 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 um, a survey that it balances out how much we, um, actually, um, claim versus what we are paid into our benefits for. So what this is for is for our insurance when it comes to our, um, basically what we're, what we're trying to do here is, um, the documents that are, hold on. I have projects on the bring here now, so I just don't want to miss. Um, this, um, is to make sure that, um, we are, um, setting aside enough, um, uh, dollars or what we're doing is also, it's more about, uh, structure, um, for framework, for policies and bylaws to make sure that we're covered in case of certain actions like just even like a working alone policy for safety or, um, really it's to do really more with, um, to do with our insurance. So it's going to probably involve a, a few more policies and just, uh, they ask certain questions if we are handling, um, wait for this to load, I'm sorry. Um, but, um, it, it's really just to make sure that we are not, um, we're not opening ourselves out to unnecessary risk through lack of policy is really what the conversation was. We had a couple hour Zoom meeting with her and basically they, uh, brought us to fill out a questionnaire, um, with certain planning documents, um, tied to infrastructure planning, um, and how, if we have the policies in place, if they're being reviewed and updated, if so, how often, um, and it's really just trying to figure out, I guess, kind of how, how on top we are with our framework from the M I B C's perspective. And that was, um, and yeah.
So it kind of sounds like you're going to do a survey, you're going to tick the wrong box and next thing you know, you're going to have additional policies and procedures. Doesn't it sound a little bit like that?
Well, it, it, it's sort of, the, the questions that they were asking, like, they give you a companion guide, but, uh, the, one of the, uh, like the first question out of the box is, do you have a written policy or procedure for records management for your local government? Is your policy up to date and reflects current operational practice? And it goes about this for every function that we do, finance, um, does your local government have a written business continuity plan? Uh, et cetera, et cetera. And it's contract management, do we require that all agreements for contracts and delivery of supporting services to communities be in writing? If so, what is the signing policy? And it's going through all of that. So, you know, really looking at it from a risk perspective, but it's really kind of shining a light on where our operational framework is for the insurance and just the protection side of things, um, more so. Um, so that's where it's probably leaning more into some more policies. Um, like the one next meeting that I've been bringing forward is actually a policy to review our policies, um, on a specific timeline. So we'll have financial, operational, uh, basically the same way that it's broken out on our website, just do for staff to review it and with council through our budget, O C P reviews, all of that stuff. It'll, um, it's really tied into probably one conversation, we'll check a lot of boxes with that, so. Um, that's what that was for, sorry.
Okay. Um, my other question is number two, we're going from the bottom to the top.
You ready?
Um, number two, um, so we conducted building assessments on all village owned and least buildings, um, although then we talked about the ones that we didn't. So the word all was kind of eye catching for myself, um, because we say, or it says that we've done all and then we say.
All except for the two.
But then it says these inspections did not include the water and wastewater plants. Well, that's a building.
Yeah, well, we're looking, so I guess for us, we were looking at it more as a building management standpoint, the, the water and sewer plants are for me a level of infrastructure. It's more about the plant than the building that houses them.
Okay, so you've put that under infrastructure.
Yeah, um, so that will go under the same as when we review our side lots and pay.
Okay, and then, um, so then when I read this and what I'm taking out of it is that the youth center has been assessed, but not the curving ring and not K P concession.
Correct, yeah. And there was a, a couple rooms in the center that we weren't able to get into because they were just locked. We, we went in in the, uh, in the middle of the day, so, um, we were hoping to catch somebody there, but we weren't. So we did see the indoor skating bowl or whatever was in the middle or the art center. I think we seen the gym, just everything that was basically open for the voting stations. So, um, we got to see the workout gym and then also the gymnasium. So, um, and then the area around it for that, but it's really more just, uh, it's tying into the, um, what the conditions are with the assessment information. So then now, um, what we'll do is I, I'm contacting E B C assessment and they're going to give me their information that they have for sizes, conditions, everything else. And we're going to wrap that into a spreadsheet. So then we'll bring that to council as far as, okay, here's the status of our buildings where the, you know, the ones that need work, the ones that don't, for the most part, our building inventory is actually in quite good shape, so that is a positive.
But you didn't go into K U concession.
No, that, that was the one, that was the one, um, that, um, you know, was probably, um, just looking at the outside and needed some work, um, for sure. But, I mean, as far as our shop or, um, curling, uh, well, the curling area you've got to see at the, just the outside, but I mean, even our recycling building, that is a top notch building. Um, so, um, that is positive that we don't have any kind of big building purchases except for maybe the concession coming down.
Well, that, that's the only concern is that we use the word all there, we use the word all there and then no urgent work needed. Um, because the concession, um, will go in there when it's raining.
No, well, that's a big, well, because I can have access to those too. I mean, that's going, I guess.
And we'll be sure because the, the office does have a key to those, to definitely the concession. I don't know about the current rate. They used to, I don't know why it wouldn't.
Yeah, I know, it might be just something that Frank wasn't carrying on. Et cetera. But, um, but yeah, we will be, um, doing assessments there and then we'll be following up with our, um, infrastructure assets and then that'll also be part of it. Tying into budget and planning.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that council received our information, the report to verify and see. Thank you. I'll say that. Because I have to think about it, I've said it for so long.
Nice.
All in favor? I'm sorry. I'm like, oh my God. Um, okay, so this is a two thousand twenty-five municipal internship. I'm going to just tell you that the reason that this is on here is because it was something that came up with you, E V C M. So I had given it, I had sent it while I was at E V C M about an internship and, um, and would have something that would fit at the office with all this extra work and downloading that we've had. So that's why it's on here, but, um, as it's recommended, the council denied application um, for municipal intern for two thousand twenty-five, doesn't mean that that has to be the information. Do you guys have any questions?
I just had a comment. I knew there was going to be training with a new person. Then this would be more training. So how much work would you be doing?
That, that's the thing. That's why I'm recommending not to do it. It's just, uh, with everything that we have going on with, you know, restoration, I don't want C P, it's just, it's too much.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, yeah, but we didn't want to have something that was staring us in the face at E V C M and not bring it to you. So that council denied the application.
Okay.
All in favor? Yeah. Funding for this part for the dump truck. So the dump truck, we put that in a budget and it was under community works is how we were going to pay for it. And whenever we use anything out of community works, you have to have a resolution. And that's why this is in front of you is so they can get, and it's the chart that covers over the top. So any questions? That council be directed to apply to the community development fund for the R D C K in the amount of four thousand four hundred twenty-six dollars, twenty cents, to cover the cost of the charts for the villages on truck.
Second. Okay.
And please a financial report, always repeated fine now, financial report that council received our information, the list of the council's available checks and electronic transfers from October fourth, two thousand twenty-four to October seventeen, two thousand twenty-four, twelve, nine hundred fifty-one thousand, seven hundred ninety-two dollars and thirty-four cents.
Okay. Have a question.
Absolutely.
Um, what is the, um, fire management directional drilling subdivision road crossing?
So that was when we had, um, put those three lines in across the highway, um, we had to.
And their gas?
Um, they are water.
Yeah. Cause there's the gas at the end of that road.
Right, yeah, there's, there's, uh, that's, I don't, I think that is that, um, property that is being developed privately, that they're working on that gas. Um, I don't think that's how, I think that will check with.
No, but I remember when you wrote it and, and we had a little heads up about it and you talked about gas. So that's why I was asking.
Yeah, yeah, sorry. You know, when I asked, uh, I asked and somebody said gas and it was rude, you don't do that. That's, I guess it was good water. So no, I apologize to Ray, that is, um, it is our water lines. Um.
And so the subdivisions across is where they went to?
Yeah, it was, uh, it was either that, um, directional drilling or they had to day out the road. And this was significantly cheaper cost or the owner. So they opted to do the directional drilling versus dig everything up. It was about half the cost, I think it ended up being under ten thousand dollars where the direct, um, the digging up was over twenty. Um, so that was kind of the reason why they went that direction and so.
Yeah, and I don't have a problem with the, the cost and, and the direction they went and.
Yeah, yeah, no, just that was, I was a scenario inside of that, they go through over and so.
Okay. Can you, um, tell us why the sunco communication installation is eighteen hundred and twenty-five dollars?
Um, yes.
Thank you.
Um, they increased, um, what happened was is, um, they increased their annual service fee, um, because of just the change in their company. Um, this was where we had done.
This is for the whole year?
Yeah.
Oh, nevermind then. I mean, I thought.
That's what service, I don't think this is for the month. They did change their plan, I can, I'll confirm that.
For like two hundred bucks or something like that. All in favor? That council received for information, this treasure before, please, that probably two thousand twenty-four?
Okay.
Any questions?
Um. Yeah, I was looking at the Max Wiser Three Week Plus Cemetery Care. Um, so I was up at the cemetery just looking around because everybody was talking about the walls. Okay, where's this wall? And, um, so I see that, um, they use like stain to do all the wood and that, yeah, and the rain's coming in and it's worn off the, some of the steel, you know, steel that they put on and starting to get those little black dots. And I was just wondering, is that included in what gets done at the cemetery there? This amount here to cover those types of expenses?
I will, I will look into that. I think the, the, the wall itself was, is its own, like, I don't know if that was part of our, um, budget for our community continuing care budget is for the maintenance of the cemetery. Um, I'll look into that because, yeah, if this is something that, uh, is already starting to fail, we have to really look at probably a different solution, um, or.
Different stain.
Or a different stain.
Yeah, it's beautiful, or is it a bit of a functioning? Yeah.
Yeah, no, it does look very nice, but, uh, yeah, um, I, I, I don't know where that, I don't know where that went.
Okay. They're right. What about this for firing a council this afternoon? This is, Cheryl's here.
Yeah, so this is for, uh, San Muy District Arts Council letter of support. Um, I guess just with, uh, ongoing conversations I've had with Cheryl. Um, what we're, uh, I guess what she is after, um, at this point of the, um, stage of the project is just some confirmation to, um, the outside parties that she's dealing with that, um, there's communication going on with her and the village regarding this project and that, uh, I guess that it is moving in a positive direction. Of course, um, we can't commit it to anything, um, that would cause any kind of change in a bylaw or, um, or any zoning or variance at this point. But, um, but it's just the idea that we are, um, kind of moving forward with this process and we're not kind of, um, and getting in the way of it, just I guess as far as, um, so I, I don't know if it would be an actual letter of support that we're looking for at this time from council, if it's more just, um, a letter of acknowledgement that we're in communications with this project and we're moving forward, um, at that time. And then, um, I guess if there's any kind of questions or any, um, um, dealings from the other parties, um, for like the grants or anything else, they can contact us and, um, we can kind of let them know where everything's at, uh, from our perspective. But I think it's just more to kind of keep the ball rolling from Cheryl's, uh, perspective, um, while she's working through the planning stages. So, um, that's what I would say for, for that. So, um, we've had a couple of conversations since this agenda item has been put out. Um, but, um, I guess this, the staff recommendation wouldn't necessarily be for a letter of support. It would be more of, uh, a letter of understanding that, um, that the, the San Muy, um, that the village is , um, communicating with San Muy Districts or council for the activities on real for, um, the instrument. So that would be the motion.
So, um, do you guys have any questions for the officers council? Or do you have questions for Derek to start? Because we, we can give freedom on the floor to Cheryl if you have questions that Derek you may not be able to answer. Um, ask questions and if you can't.
We can ask after Cheryl. Or do you, I can ask them though if you want.
Yeah.
Um, so does that mean that the San Muy District Arts Council is taking over the building?
Um, I, I guess the eventual plan is to, um, I think from the, uh, from the church, it's not at that stage yet, um, which is part of the, the zoning change that we would need to approve. Um, so that's where, uh, you know, really until that happens, we couldn't really decide on anything that.
Can I speak to them?
No, no, you can't speak unless you have free of both.
Okay, I thought that this, yes.
No.
And then the second question I had was about the residential.
Um, yeah, I, I, there is a potential for a two bedroom, um, suite at the, um, back of the building that would, um, be used as a residential area, um, for, um, the facility. So either that would be for, um, the students or for the caretaker, I guess, or, um, it would, it would be used as, as a residence for, um, the facility, for the other operations.
And my next question would be, is this one of the churches that was approved for the tax exemption?
Yes, um, in that exemption, um, um, specifically it's a note that if there's any change to the building or to the use, um, that they have to reapply. So if there is any changes, it's not, yeah, the second that there's any change, then it, um, they would have to.
Or do you have any question? Okay, so I'm just gonna, um, first of all, given letters of support, um, we always, whenever a letter of support goes, it's always specific for a grant. Um, we don't give letter of support, an overarching letter of support ever, um, because then people could use it for whatever and, and council may not be approving of that. um, because then people could use it for whatever and, and council may not be approving of that, um. So I think that if there is a request of a letter of support going forward, um, and not even a letter of understanding, because I'm not really sure what the understanding is, and I don't think council can be um, assured of an understanding, because you don't know, right, what, what, um, if it, if it does change from the church into something else, the zoning has to change, a public hearing has to happen, and public may say no. Right, so, so that's why I'm saying about the letter of understanding, um, doesn't really fit in this, if there is an actual, um, I, I, I read in here that, um, the different places that you're applying, um, why I would say that put forward to, um, um, the C E O is exactly what you're applying for to the place that you're applying for, and then, then a letter can be written for that to improve the building, not to expand outside of the building. Okay, I know, um, uh, we're, we're talking so you can hear us, but we're talking as council, okay? Does that make sense? Um, does anybody um, have any more questions? In that regard, is that we're, so we are, we're under an understanding that there is no approval of changing the structure of the building or changing the designation of the building, because that has not gone through council, that has not gone through the public or anything like that, um, talking about a heat pump, applying for a heat pump, applying for insulation, stuff like that. There is nothing wrong with that, and it's, and it's kind of like the library, having friends of the library, the friends of the museum, that it's the arts council is like the friends of the church helping down, improves the building. So.
But they have to have a service there.
They do.
Do they?
Yes, they still do. Yeah, yeah.
Cause that's, cause I spent a little bit of time in that tax exemption.
And, yeah, they, they do have um, a service there.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, yeah. Okay? So, um, so was the change to recommendations that council, the village council provide a letter of support to the Salmo District Arts Council for the improvement for, for grant applications, improvement, improvements to the building? That's, yeah.
Support to some of the churches to.
So, we'd like to comment that if it is, if there is a service, then it's, it's exempt, so if you went to a B C assessment, when the B C assessment was done and you brought that to their attention, they wouldn't be coming through with them.
Let's see that again, I mean, it's under, I, I don't think I understood you.
So it's, it's a mandatory exemption, churches?
Yeah, for the actual building, not the land, yeah.
Yeah, and so there's, when you go, if the assessment decides or should have um, something in the file on that property, that does um, the tax exemption.
Mm-hmm.
Just like we had covenant at, you know, Salmo Valley Estates and also at the village, same thing for there. I don't know if it should come through the village, so I don't know if we should be paying the, whatever it was. I have, I'm gonna look at it now, I'll bring it to your attention later.
Yeah, if any church can have, except, not me, within the church.
I'm not talking about the actual activities, I'm just saying, we, we just failed a bunch of taxes and charges, right? Permissive taxes. Some of those could be reduced. I, I, when I did some reading on it, and so I'll, I'll bring that to you when I have time. I'm just saying you could be saving some money potentially. So I'll look into a little bit more of that.
So did you get that question?
So the council provided a letter of support to Salmo District Arts um, society to approve grant application or improvements to existing building. To approve, approve, oh, granted, I'm sorry, to approve grant applications for improvements to the existing building.
Okay. Second. Any more questions on that one? All clear? Get in the hands. Period. Okay, first one is, um, nothing? Uh, reports? Council box.
Yes, so they got some accessibility feedback forms, I think it's really, really sound mobility, I have, tried to get a few people to fill out, um, the people that were in wheelchairs and, um, they're very independent and they really don't do a lot of services over there. So I did have a few forms, uh, one person was staffed one in wheelchair. Um, but it just sounds like generally, um, it is the sidewalks. Didn't like jumping on the sidewalks, I prefer the boards myself. Um, also, um, I went to the um, R D C K Housing Needs Report update, which is um, just to see, they, they just were going to, you know, housing provider to see if there's something missing. And so it's basically an overview of um, the region, you know, like Salmo, casual. Um, areas. That was last week, it was April, I think. Anyways, um, it was very, it, it was about the whole area in general, and I tried to pick off the things that were for Salmo, and I understand there's gonna be a report for Salmo, but it's not coming out until after it's been approved at the R D C K Board on December eleven.
Who told you this? I was at a board meeting asked about it, and I didn't know anything about it.
Uh, Jenna from, I think it's um, McCullough, I'm all their master. Cause um, and I also had a fraction of minutes of speech, and I thought it's some cannot miss out, will be excellent. I'm doing everything. Um, so just um, about the housing case in force, and the piece about Salmo, that says that the housing is expected every three hundred and twenty-three. And when you think about it, um, maybe, you know, we've got one thousand two hundred people, let's say there's two per house, that's six hundred houses, more or less, I'm just being, very general. Three hundred and twenty-three, more than a fifty percent increase in twenty years, which is, you know, highly unlikely. But I think you can use it as, you know, incentives to move forward, and um, it can also be like a, you know, have a decision, you know, we eat this much and um, anyways, it just breaks it down into what they're looking for. Um, yeah. So that was, and the big report is gonna be coming out sometime in January, so.
Yeah, they were saying on the news that Nelson is in line for thirty-five hundred, um, so, yeah, and I guess just to answer like, for our uh, waste contract, um, there's four hundred eighty-six. Right? That's what we're. So.
What was I gonna say?
Yeah.
So, it's like you said, for Nelson, it's, it's all based on a set of wise method of calculating, so everybody's in the same boat.
Yeah.
On that, and I said, well, what about B C housing, I mean, like, that's a hell of a lot of um, money they're gonna be doing. If, especially when you have, you know, that quantity of below margin subsidies. And they said.
They're doing it though.
Yeah. Well, that's gonna keep going for a long time. Anyways, um, you asked about it, so like, I got you a copy. Um, if anybody's interested in how we determine the actual number, it's here. If, you know, I'm interested, that's fine.
Yeah, no, I, when I had um, called you, I was hoping that I was gonna get, so if anybody else wanted to attend, but because I asked the R D C K, they didn't know anything about the meeting, I asked the C E O, and he's like, I have no idea.
Well, they're super, they're, they're trying, and, and I thought.
No, I meant about the meeting on the eighteenth. They had no idea about the meeting.
Oh, yeah, but I mean, I think it was just they're doing their due diligence, the McCullough.
Mm-hmm.
And they're just trying to make sure that, you know, are we missing anything? Is there something that you see, because they, they, they started talking about um, how the population is gonna be changing, there'll be less seniors, it'll be about the, the same amount of uh, population grows across the board of age, and um, so they just wanted to say, you know, what do you see, are you seeing something different?
Mm-hmm. Okay. Thank you. Uh, council minutes. Okay.
Here is the librarians' the minutes from the last library meeting, well, the library director's report, I should say. And then they also have these, um, that the Hootney Library, or the yeah, Hootney Library, Foundations of Libraries Association that we've been saying. And they just have these little marketing campaign about talking about library funding and their need for more consistent funding from the government, so they asked me to bring these along and give them to council. Um, and they also are planning on coming in for a delegation in November once their, their draft budget is stone faded, so they will be coming next month.
Every single um, motion at U V C M about increase that unanimously. So it's just the government that needs to go back to doing that, but.
And something I really see every time I am at the library meetings, whenever it comes to budget season, and you just see how much stress it causes them and how the increases and like, I can just see how much they hate asking for more money, but then inflation and ultimately like, it's a necessary part of our world, unfortunately, but I can really see how much stress it brings up here. We appreciate them committing their delegations.
Absolutely, wish that everybody that brought taxation would do that. So you can send back saying thank you very much, and we look forward to uh, seeing them. Um, I apologize, I worked hard on the Friday to get this done, um, and Brandy wasn't here, so that's why, um, my report, that's why, yeah, the C E O sent it out to you guys via email, if you have any questions on there. Please let me know, we just sent a whole lot of money for resource recovery uh, last week. Over a million dollars. Um, plus about one point three. Um, yeah. Um, there was one thing that, do you have the education one, so portfolio?
Yes.
Okay, so there's a, there's this program called Wildsite, and I don't believe I even have it emulated for. I don't, I don't see it. Um, and I have passed it on to Casey Burke, I, I emailed her with the program, and it is about recycling, and it is a program that, that we as the R D C K support, and all the taxpayers in the R D C K actually pay money. Twenty, I think it's twenty-seven thousand dollars is that we give for this, and we're not the only ones, like, it's a hundred thousand dollar um, program, um. And it's supposed to be in the schools, and it's, and I believe it's for grades five, I can't remember, um, three, maybe four or five or something like that, and it's about teaching them how, um, they're recycling and stuff, and, and Ms. Burke had sent back and said that they used to have a really good robust program at the school, um, but whatever happened, uh, um, and it's, and they don't have anymore, and everybody else is getting uh, a good chunk of money out of this and, and getting the kids, and we haven't had it here for a few years, so, so um, I am going to get.
I think another question, so while I have a look and pass it on to the principal.
Okay, she did send it to another teacher too, I don't know who it was, um, and also the R D C K staff member Todd, and I cannot think, I think it's Johnson, that's last name, I'm not totally sure. It said that he would even come out and actually, if there, if the program didn't happen, that he would actually come out uh, free on his time to do education with the kids, so I think it's something that we really need to, um, make sure that our, our kids in Salmo are, are getting to access these kind of things, so, um, I forgot to put it in. Any other, any questions? Okay. That the verbal and written request for a mayor and council we receive for information. All clear? There was a, there is. Other question, period. You have a question, you want to ask us now?
Uh, yeah.
Tell us, tell us what you wanted to tell us.
My first comment in terms of village infrastructure is I would also invite you to go into an art studio at the community center, we're training. Art studio at the community center while it's waiting.
Oh.
Cause it also leaks in there quite significantly. Um, and then my comment around our project in your letter of support, and maybe it's too late to change anything at this point, um, but I sent that letter on Thursday, and things have already changed since then, because we've been receiving environmental reports and architecture reports and that sort of thing. And we are applying for an entire stage two planning phase, um, which will take us until next October. And so over the next year, then we'll work on permits and licenses and planning and that kind of thing, um. But for us to be able to create a legal building, um, there'll inherently have to be changes to the building because our stairwell down into the building is, doesn't need code. And we don't have enough room really within the basement to build the number of washrooms that the building needs to meet current code, and so there'll just inherently have to be some physical changes to the building, and we're going to have to undergo a whole another year of planning before we can really get those dialed, um, and so I guess the letter of support request is not just for improvements, but also for more planning and feasibility studies, which is what will be applying to the B C, B C infrastructure program for, and then also the rural economic diversification infrastructure program, but both of the, neither of those were applying for construction cost at this point, we're just applying for a hundred thousand dollars to talk about it. Yeah, right, so, I think it definitely like, is hard for some of the like old timers on our programming, where we're like, we're gonna spend a hundred and seventy thousand dollars talking about what improvements we're going to do when we theoretically could just replace the roof and put it in a legal bathroom for a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Um, but within the SMART report, or like, within the environmental engineers' report that C B T pays for with their SMART grant, for example, they recommend putting in thirteen thousand dollars worth of insulation in our ceiling. But that triggers needing to get a structural engineer involved, um.
To put insulation?
Uh, well, then the snow won't melt and slide, and so if we put insulation in the ceiling, we probably need more trusses, and we probably need snow stops, and we probably need snow plants. And the whole thing.
It's a, it's still gonna slide.
The whole thing gets, needs to be signed off by a structural engineer for us to be able to go ahead, and so we are, we're going to apply for the community development, like the hundred thousand dollars of the rural economic infrastructure program, and then we're going to apply for twenty. And then we're going to apply for $25,000 to the B C A C, which is, the B C A C is who gave us the funding to do the architect report thus far. But it basically just uncovered more expensive things about our building. And to answer your question, in due time, the Arts Council plan is to take over the operational expenses of the building. But the Anglican Church will not leave the building even if the Salmo District Arts Council is covering the operational expenses. As long as there is a congregation, they'll be in the building. And when we applied for our tax exemption, the Arts Council was already in the building. And this was our second time getting the tax exemption under the church with the Arts Council in the building. And then eventually we'll have to have another conversation about it, but not yet.
So just so, when you're saying, like, I understand about having to have the second, like soon as you change a bug, it triggers everything, right? As you guys are binding up. And so I understand that, but what we're saying is to push out the back wall and make two residential suites. That's a structural change?
Yeah.
Wouldn't be, would not be in any, like, if you're applying for that, I would say halt.
We're applying to talk about it for another year.
Right. I guess my question in my mind is, is that putting the horse before the cart before rezoning?
Um, no, it's part of the rezoning. Like ideally, we will talk about rezoning between now and March.
Yeah, but if the community says no, then you've spent $100,000 to only get an answer no. That's what I'm saying.
Well, we have a phased plan where we're doing community consultation.
You guys don't do that community consultation for zoning changes.
Well, we will work with the village in whatever parameters the village has set out. I've been asking for clarity around that process since July, but I've not yet received clarity around that. And within our construction, we have a two-phase construction process proposed. And phase one is the front half kind of critical infrastructure. And phase two is the botanical arts lab with the residential suites. We could get through $100,000 of talking about the building before we even get to the botanical arts lab and residential suites. Like when we have our last community meeting to talk about it, which I invited you all to, but in our meeting, that was probably like a 15,000 person meeting. And the money was shockingly fast when you get into consulting, which I'm sure you guys are very, very well aware of.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I have a question. For the grants that you're going to be applying for, so it's, they want to see a letter of support or some type of undercover proposal, do they specifically ask for that?
And yeah, when I was talking about the rural economic development infrastructure program, they said it would be nice. It's not critical, it's nice. And they like to know that we're in ongoing collaboration. Like, we're not going to get permits without talking to you guys.
But it's not even, you're not talking to us about permits, right? So that's why I'm saying is, is the cart before the horse of changing the zoning? Because to do anything other than to change that building, to anything other than a church, because it's zoned for a church, it's not zoned, I don't believe. It's not zoned for residential, it's not zoned for commercial, anything.
They're not willing to take that risk and be in a position where we end up having to give the rural economic diversification some money back. But we're still, like, we're still essentially in, like, conceptual planning.
I'm just saying that us giving a letter stating that that would be our council saying, oh yeah, we're going to change it. That's where, that's where it's, we can't say I'm supportive of it when we haven't gone out because that's where the public hearing, because we have to be, like, we have to not have a yay or a nay in our minds. We have to be going in open-minded, hearing what the public has to say. And maybe every single person in the public is like, absolutely.
Yes, we, like, we need the grant to be able to facilitate doing a public consultation in terms of our internal staffing and that sort of stuff as well.
Okay, just so you understand where council has to be, if we need to be on a neutral.
Yeah, like, I very much welcome the letter to be worded in a cautious, careful way that isn't overcommitting council to any specific development or anything like that.
And it's to who?
The British Columbia Arts Council and the Rural Economic Diversification Infrastructure Program. And then if council is willing to write us a letter of support to the Columbia Basin Trust for the SMART grant, which is environmental improvements to the building. And that one, like, that one seems easier, but it, it's inherent on other. It's also, yeah, like, we need funding to hire a structural engineer before we can even decide if we're going to go ahead with that. Although I spoke again with the Columbia Basin Trust today and they said that they would allow us to apply for that funding for 2026 construction to use kind of like as leverage, anchor funding, other funding as well. And we have $5,000 transitively committed from R D C K towards the project. And $5,000 transitively committed from R D C K towards the planning project as well. And then tech is talking about how much money they're willing to give us. But it sounds like tech is interested in being early leverage funding for the project as well. And then I talked with the Chamber of Commerce and I'm going to go and do a delegation to their board. But they are open and enthusiastic about the idea of us having a little info center or wealth center in our addition.
And not have the.
I talked to the district briefly, I'm going to go to one of the council meetings. And I requested a letter of support from them. And look, maybe we could have a collaboration, maybe we could share a summer student or something. I don't know, we'll see what happens. But they know that we're talking about having a little info center in there. And if we do that, it would be probably above where we have to do the addition to, like, to do the second basin for the legal stairwell. And I know David Hearn is enthusiastic about the idea of us having a second basin or a basin addition with a legal fire code stairwell. He came to our last community meeting. I invited him because his property borders our property.
Well, that's good. Okay. Excellent. Well, yeah, we can work on to make sure that they're appropriate and that you're able to apply for, to be able to have those talks. All right, I mean, Observer, do you have any questions? Yep. Okay, well, thank you. And we're just going to take a five-minute recess. Thank you for coming and helping us with more information.
Yes, thank you. You have a you all to it.
Yeah. Thank you, Cheryl, I'll have a good night.
Don't forget me and Chase. He's at the church now. Thank you.